Central's our regular Board of Education meeting, Monday, December ninth. I'm seven oh two. Call the meeting to order. First order of business is pledge allegiance, are we all right?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Take the roll at this time. Mrs. Rogers and Mr. Redmond are not with us at this time. All other members are present. Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was.
Okay, at this time, we have an opportunity for public comment. Do we have anybody?
Bill.
Okay, Bill.
I have a, I have a few things to share with you. When this started boiling up inside me, it started with the idea that we had money to spend on a new team. And I thought, well, I, I, I could use a few dollars myself, so there are a few things that I wanted to bring up. I, I am. I want to say I'm famous for starting things in the school district that didn't cost any money. I started the trap team. We just won conference this year. It was free for you guys. I started a middle school C-Club. That's gonna cost nothing because I'm doing it through the FFA. But there are some things that I am needing within the classroom. And it's not just me. I started asking other questions in terms of where, where there's need of others. And I have some examples as well. But what it comes down to is I, I added a second A teacher. Second A teacher, nine. Same budget. We didn't double the budget. We added a second A teacher, kept the budget the same. When you start adding programming, whether it's a food science class or some other, where they're heavily burdened with product that you need for the class, the budget doesn't go up. We need money. If I need a big ticket item that might cost more than $4,000, I can't save money from year to year because I'm kind of thrifty like that. Because that's not the way our school budgets work. I can't save enough money in the future for that prized item. We need money. So I have a few examples. I know I did talk to Mr. Kruisky earlier today about it. And there's wish lists that are going to be started, and I appreciate that, but I thought I'd bring this up. The first one on there is, I got some from, obviously, from medals and small legends, which I teach. I did get some from Business Ed. I did get some from Science. I did, I got some from Courtney Hawkins. They might not be exactly what they want, but I know they've talked about this is the needs that they have. The one from the science was, we want a full-size model of mussels. And John Tacman, being a deer hunter that he is, would, I'd rather just lay out the carcass and pull the, the muscle groups out of, out of the carcass. I maybe started thinking of meat science class and a full-size freezer, and you don't want to go down that route. But, I mean, that's the direction I had, had, that he wanted, was looking at that, and that's included. So, we are in need of, of money into the classrooms. It's been a long time, and we could use your help. So I have twelve.
Any questions for Bill?
No questions.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the input. And, you know, we are collecting information, so just will be put in with that. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Is there anybody else with public comment at this time? Okay, hearing none. Next item on the agenda is our highlight on youth. Starting with the middle school performance. I don't know if our students are ready yet.
You're at a concert right now.
So it'll be tough for them to be here unless they're split personality.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll pick them up when they come.
Yes.
Our next item would be our Special Olympic Wisconsin Unified School Champion.
Well, yeah, that's me. But I shared my things with Pete and Chance, and neither of them are here. So I can just tell you about it, and when they get here, I'm assuming they're still at the concert, too. They can have it up there whenever. What? I don't like to, because it feels exclusion. I don't like to leave you guys out, I'm sorry. So most of you know me, some of you don't. I'm Haley, I'm a middle school special education teacher here, at Central, obviously. I just want to start by saying it's really great to see all you guys. I don't ever get to see a lot of you people, and nice to see you all in one place. So, thank you for having me and letting me share about something that I'm really excited to tell you about. Most of you guys have heard of Special Olympics Wisconsin. You think about all the athletes that you see playing on the weekends. You hear of tours across the state. You've heard about them nationally. You've heard about them at the World Games. Something new that Special Olympics, well, not really new, but new to this area, and new, newer to Wisconsin that they're really trying to boast is school unified component. So as you know, it's really hard to get a lot of our students to do things on the weekends, especially my students who require. Here is Pete, you've got my, my presentation. But I'm cheering about it already.
A presentation.
Yeah. So something they're really trying to work towards is promoting to do sport and leisure unified within a school setting, to help get athletes involved younger and to shift their main focus of, it used to be just more acceptance or awareness, and now they're moving towards more acceptance and inclusion. So what are we doing to include these students, to make things more meaningful for everyone? You know, not just understanding that we have students who play differently, who talk differently, walk differently, whatever, and truly now accept and embrace who they are and be able to play meaningfully with those students and adults. So what we're doing at the middle school, we've become a unified champion school. We've been for the last few years. And this year, we're kind of taking the plunge and we're forming our own team. So not only will we be doing inclusive things within school, we'll be doing things like more sport-related. So we formed our first team, and we did our first competition, if you will, last week in Hudson, with Hudson and Stillwater Schools. And we did Unified Share Day, and we had to share dances. No, that's fine, just go ahead. We can sit down. So this is our team. These are, to be a unified school, you need to, yeah, I know. To be a unified school, you have to make an effort to do everything fifty-fifty. So while our classrooms are inclusive, and the whole middle school is very inclusive, and I feel very blessed to work with the staff that's very inclusive. To be truly a unified champion school, we need to provide opportunities for our students that are one-on-one or as close to fifty-fifty as you can, meaning each one of our students with an intellectual disability is partnered with a peer who does not have an intellectual disability, to help form those meaningful relationships. So this is our team, and my seven students were able to pick very easily seven peers without disabilities, without any of my help. I mean, I think I probably could have had about fifty students up there without intellectual disabilities. We have a lot of students that have showed up at my door, very sad that they were not a part of this opportunity. So I'm excited to add new opportunities that they can be a part of, too. So these are my kiddos. This is our first, like I said, outing in Hudson, Unified Share Day. We participated in a, kind of a dance or performance type thing. So Hudson has been, has had a unified cheer team for many years now. They're called the Rhinestone Raiders, and they kind of kicked it up and showed us how it was done, and it was really excellent. They gave us a lot of new, really great ideas for how we can beef up our performance. So this is a picture of our students out here on the left. These would be my kiddos, and they're showing all the Hudson and Stillwater kids and their unified partners how to do our dance. So they, we performed, and then we taught them one of our favorites. And we just went as the whip and nailing, which I was not a part of. But they did an excellent job, and they were so brave, and all of our student helpers, our unified partners, were absolutely incredible and fearless as they took the stage. And it was, it was so fun for me to watch both my, my students and their partners really come alive in a whole new light on the stage. It was, it was excellent. And this is a picture on the right of all of the participants and their partners. We're the only middle school, so I feel kind of excited about that and hopeful that we can bring in more middle schools in our area to join us in, in our new adventure. Some of the other things we hope to do with our new unified team, I'm sorry, we don't have a name yet. The kids are still working on it. One of the kids is already telling her mom's gonna make his T-shirts. One girl's gonna make scrunchies. We got it all figured out. They're kind of taking the lead, and that's been really, really fun for me to watch, to, to watch all these leaders come up. So in January, we are going to be doing Unified Bowling Tournament in River Falls with some of the local districts. I think I've convinced the high school for sure to join in, and I think I'm, I'm working on getting the elementary. I think Boblin's coming to River Falls. I'm not sure about Hudson, lots of local schools, you know. So again, we will bring our unified partners, and they will bowl as a team to participate in that competitively. So, I just wanted to end with this quote because I just, I think it's very, very fitting for what my hope for this program will be. It just says, leaders become great not because of their power, but because of their ability to empower others. And I've already seen, it's only been, not even a, a month with our partners, and I've already watched them become leaders in more ways than I would have expected them to. And I feel just so, so fortunate that I get to work with them and watch them turn around and empower their peers within middle school, high school, and as they go on. And I would be remiss to not say that while I'm here and have all your attention, I would, I just want to give a little shout-out to my leader, Miss Pat, because she is exactly like John Maxwell says, and she has empowered me to be what I want, to build my program to be what I want it to be, and she's the reason why I came here and why I'm here still. And I just think she deserves that credit because she's the best boss I could ask for anymore. And I know you don't like this, so I'm sorry. I had to say thank you because it really means a lot to me to have you. So. Yes.
Can we special order for Kurt, Kurt, me, and David the scrunchies?
Yes, yes. I think they need them for ball as well.
Part of the unified theme.
Yes, as we, we fit for all.
When you think about lessons learned, Haley, how, how do the kids contribute back in? Because I would think that this is, one of the things that I've always noticed about Central kids is the connection between all of our students. You know, you see it at prom, you see it at dances, you see it at football games. And you said it was a really fast list to get to that seven.
Yeah.
But who's, who's, who's actually doing the leading and who's doing the, the learning? Or is it really?
I think it's actually, I like, I like that you asked that question because I think it really goes both ways. I think what's really fun for me is that I get to watch my seven be leaders in a whole different way. You know, they are showing their peers how to be kind in a whole new way. They are leading them to be fearless in a whole new way. They are leading them to be brave in a whole new way. And then on the other hand, we have our peers who are very much leaders, too, and setting a great example for my students and for their peers throughout the middle school. You know, it's like, wow, you're, you're doing this with Mrs. Bunk's class? And tell me more about that. Oh, that's really cool, you know. They, it's, it's two-sided. I think that they're both, both groups, students with intellectual disabilities and students without, really both to be leaders, and that's what's so fun. Does that answer your question?
It does. And, and I ask it really specifically because we keep asking, how do we define being one of the ten best schools in Wisconsin? And when we start getting to program level like this, those are differentiators, and those are the types of schools that parents are raising their hand, saying, I want my child to be part of that environment. So, you know, just as Scott always challenges us to think beyond what's our definition of being a top-ten school, I think this is just another example that brings it to life.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And I feel, like I said, I feel very fortunate to be in the middle school and to be amongst that other educators who are so supportive of me and my students and are so willing to take on anything I throw at them. Or, you know, I have some that go out of their way completely to make sure that my students have a place in their room to be successful without me even having, having to think or offer suggestions. You know, I have a seventh-grade teacher who comes to me and says, hey, I know your students probably are good at little bubbles. Can they? I said, no, they don't have the oral strength to do that. Okay, great, well, I've got this whole plan in place. And I'm gonna have them do this so they can be leaders, and they're gonna, whatever, how, what do you think? Like, yes, that's excellent. So, you know, I have that going on, and then I have, again, their peers seeing my students be leaders. And it just goes and goes and goes and goes, and grows and grows and grows.
Yeah.
So I feel very, very fortunate. And this is all, like I said, we've been, I felt since I've come to Central, very blessed within the school environment and doing things within our academics and within our school environment. But this is going to be something extra to take outside, to take it further, to give them a whole new sense of community and pride and another opportunity to lead. And I forgot to tell you, these pictures over here are from the Friendship Games from last year, where Pete and Chance were willing to let the whole middle school come and watch my students participate, you know, like a track and field day with students from, I think there was nine other districts there. It was involvement, so it was nice and close. So Pete organized the buses for us, and we brought the whole middle school, and they made posters. We spent the morning prepping them what it might look like, sound like, feel like, and how to be a good fan in the stands. And it was absolutely incredible. And last year, last two years, I chose to do it unified, so I've got partners without disabilities to play with my friends, even though all their school districts didn't, and that has been really, really powerful to me. So this year, we are going to, we are hosting. It'll be in May, I will share that all up with you guys. I would really encourage you guys to come and be a part of it because I think it will be a very, very cool thing for you guys to, to, to take part in. But we will be, that's another way we are going to unify, we are going to organize unified relays and encourage all the districts to bring unified peers as well. And I think the whole middle school's gonna get on board again, so. Sorry, I just missed that word. Any other questions? Sorry, I could talk forever.
I just want to thank you for your passion and leadership and energy. It's fantastic.
I love my job, so thanks for having me. Anything else?
Thanks, Haley. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yep.
I think we have choir.
I think so. I'm ready.
We have choir kids next weekend.
Come on in. They just dazzled us here in the auditorium.
So he's a roadie, too. Welcome. Think that's right, will you tell me?
All right. Here are you, the ladies from our seventh-grade choir, just got done, just walked up the stage of the auditorium to a ball house.
Starting their.
Seeing a concert over there.
Now starting their whirlwind tour.
What's that?
Now starting their whirlwind tour.
That's right, yes. They're, you're their first staff, so, yes. I invited just a few ladies because they're going to sing one of the women's pieces that we sang at the concert. All right, ready, girls? Jingle bells first. If I can find it. It is, okay. I think we're good. I don't know how well this is gonna work, we'll see.
Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh. O'er the fields we go, o'er the fields we go. Bells on bobtails ring, bringing spirits bright. What fun it is to laugh and sing a sleighing song tonight. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride. And soon this fenny bride was seated by my side. The horse was lean and malle, his horse had seemed as far. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got outside. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh.
Now I can turn it. Now I follow, now it wasn't working. Okay.
Holy night, the stars are brightly shining. It is the night of the dear Savior's birth. Oh, may the world incident never parting, till He appeared and the soul felt its worth. The thrill of it, the weary heart rejoices, for yonder breaks a new and glorious dawn. Fall on your knees, oh, hear the angels' voices. Oh, night divine, oh, night, the Christ was born. Oh, night, oh, night divine, oh, night divine.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Before you leave, I would like to have the girls enter for some salsa.
Well, I'm Michelle Schmidt.
I'm Sarah Rosopoulos.
I'm Elsa Dato.
I'm Sade Cassad.
I'm Ashlyn Halkworth.
I'm Lydia Huber.
I'm Ellie Myers.
I'm Kendra Fox.
I'm Raylan Zoll.
And I'm Zayn Stark. Seventh-grade ladies.
Thank you very much. It was an excellent show. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Another wonderful performance.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, our comments from board members and superintendent. Start with the SEC School Board 2020 Spring Election. So. We have two candidates that were up for election, Mr. Olson and Mr. Hugh.
So I asked Howard if I could just have a minute. After a long discernment, I've decided not to sit reelection in 2020. And since moving here in August of 2004 with Amy and the kids, when Anna was a fourth grader, Claire was a second grader, and Joe was playing in mud puddles as a four-year-old at home, I truly have been honored and humbled to serve the SEC community for the past fifteen years. I thought it was important to share some of the rationale behind my decision. First, out of respect to all of you as board peers, administrators, staff, friends, community. And secondly, to make sure that people know why I made this choice and, and why it's a personal decision and what it's based on. It keeps anyone from having to guess, and I just respect you all too much to have you having to guess. The decision's based on many considerations. I wrote it down because rarely am I at a loss for word or nervous, and yet I am both tonight. The decision's based on many considerations, and together with Amy and the family, I believe it's the right choice for us at this time. I've had fifteen years to share my impact and influence in this district, and I believe that I've put my very best work into doing that. Someone did it before me, someone's gonna do it after me. I was entrusted with this fifteen years to do my very best work during this time. And yet, I do know that we are all replaceable and that we have to leave our impact and our mark in the moments that we have. And I do believe that whoever the new person will be will come and share their very best as well. And so that's why I have hope in the process and the system and why we do what we do. Amy and I are writing the next chapter of our life. We are embarking on a new faith journey. And in our personal lives especially, but also engaging youth in a deeper, more meaningful way as they are challenged in what we believe is a crisis of faith, a true sense of belonging, and defining their meaning and purpose in life. I have personally taken on the challenge of leading confirmation at St. Mary's right here in Hammond and increased my participation with a program called Together Encounter Christ, based in Central Minnesota. There are many opportunities to share my impact and influence in this faith-based ministry and programs, and Amy and I feel a very strong calling to do so. I have been and will continue to be an advocate of. I have been and will continue to be an advocate of St. Christ Central. I absolutely believe that the what is best for our kids approach and our willingness as a board, administration, and staff to drive meaningful change even when it's difficult or the status quo says that we're already good enough, is important work. I don't know exactly how my advocacy will look in the future. However, I believe that this district is a great district, and I will support it and remain I will support it, and I truly believe that this district will continue to become better and better. The decision to not seek reelection is not made lightly, quickly, or without deep discernment. I'm listening to both my head and my heart as I choose this course and as Amy and I choose our next life, chapter, and adventure together. I'm certainly a better person for serving with this board. I firmly believe this board will continue to focus on kids and continually challenge and propel St. Christ Central forward to unimagined successes. And I strongly encourage the community to choose a person who passionately believes in our kids and pursuing excellence in all we do. And I will always cherish being a Panther. And so it is with great respect and certainly a difficult choice, Howard, that I have chosen to not seek reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I guess John and I talked about this. I respect his decision. I want to thank him for his many years of service. He has been a strong advocate, a strong supporter of ideas for this district. It'll move us forward significantly, so I don't take that lightly.
And you'll start with me till May, so.
I appreciate that, and we'll keep leaning on you until that time. I want to thank you, John, and thank you for your continued success in the next chapter that you chose.
Thanks, Howard.
Really appreciate your service. And David, you filed your papers, so you're running for reelection?
I am.
Okay, so with that, I guess we have a seat that's open and we'll be looking for candidates. Thank you. Thank you all. Any other comments from board members? Carrying on, then we will move on to the next item, which is an update from our Wage and Benefit Committee meeting.
Do you want to take it, David, or do you want me to?
We're going to crunch more numbers. I think basically the takeaway was trying to make sure we're focusing on the correct 110% to make sure that we're I guess really basing the numbers off of the correct comparison, maybe. There's a little bit of, I guess, mismatch right now of some of the numbers and how we're coming up over how we're going to apply the 110%. Not that anybody's doing anything incorrectly at all. It's just interpretation. But I see, but at this point, I think just there's more number crunching to do before we figure out exactly what the total package is going to look like. You want to go any more in depth?
I guess I'll just reframe a few things. So Jen and team have gone through all positions in the district. We've modeled out tiers based on years of service. We've held some of the working principles, like what would it take to get to 110% of the benchmark average in year seven? And that's across all positions except for administrators. That's slightly different because that's more of out of a market pricing type of situation. And then Jen just got the 2018-19 numbers, and seeing those, we have to plug those numbers in and recalculate some of the cells. And so that's really just fine tuning at this point. We believe we have the right stack and sort. We know that we've gone through all the positions, which is important. That helps us align across the entire district. Now it's just making sure that we're dialed in sharply on the numbers. The other thing, Howard, that we did talk about, and we don't see this as a Wage and Benefit Committee activity, but we believe that if you look at all district need, you know, recently we were told there's 300 buildable lots in the town of Hammond alone, and we know that we're seeing more holes going in the ground. You can build houses faster than schools. There's program level desires that we have. Bill, you certainly just brought some and shared some in-classroom-type needs. So let's say there's program need. There's probably facilities needs as well. There's population needs, and then there's wage and benefit needs. And so we're going to have to figure out a way to have those different buckets all contributing to what's the whole district need look like? And how does that match up with what constituents want to embrace? And make those choices and recommendations from there. So we see where one piece of that puzzle, but we don't want to be necessarily caught up in the we believe it's board work that needs to happen or committee work that needs to happen, but not wage and benefit work that would be tackling those other segments. We want to be dialed in on the wage and benefits aspect of it.
I'd agree with that. We're looking at many aspects, and facilities needs, but we're also looking at programming and staffing needs for now and in the future. We need to get that dialed in and prioritized. There's not unlimited amounts of money to do whatever we want to do, so we need to sharpen our pencils and do our homework. There are items to do our homework, which include population study to see where we're at, see where our growth is going, measure those, our growth expectations with the needs. With that, we will go forward, so thank you.
And a shout out to Jen, holy smokes. The number of, the amount of data that you manage to bring together so that we can just apply credible challenge and ask for different ways. You know, we could not get to the point of asking those questions without that hard, front-edge amount of investment from you. And so certainly, thank you for that ongoing effort of helping us get dialed in so that, you know, you give us the easy job. Credibly challenge what this is, make sure that we're aligning code with set. And that's the tip of the iceberg, the amount of work that's under it, so much appreciated.
Any other questions for the Wage and Benefit Committee? Carrying on, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Mr. Brock Guyen of Clifton, Larson, Allen, will present our annual school audit report. Welcome, Brock.
Thank you. Is anywhere near as entertaining as the choir group does in here, but I'm just be sure, so hopefully that's a good option.
You can sing it to us.
I'm sure I can. Very well, well.
There's the book you're looking for.
There's the book.
There's the book.
You should have a handout as well.
More interesting reading.
So holiday briefing here, you do have the two-page handout. I saw it come from past years of those. Booklet itself, I am here actually just spoken with them. If you have any questions on anything with the audit numbers or anything related to that, go ahead and plot them up here. I'll do my best to answer those questions as well. But what I plan to cover, everything you need to know for me is pretty much summarized in this two-page handout here, so I'm going to stick to that. So first and foremost, I guess the timing has been really good this year. So obviously, your staff does a very nice job. Talked about that just a little short bit ago here. Getting all the information together for an audit. Each year, there's more audit requirements. There's just more that goes into it, so they do a nice job of adjusting to that, getting us everything we need, answering our questions. This year, we, well, better than maybe the last three or four years, is information from the state. So we've been waiting, kind of in a holding pattern when it comes to the audit last few years, just as a timing of when they get information to us. So with that, it came in at the beginning of October, gives us the time to turn it on before, basically, the holiday Thanksgiving. So here we are in December, which is nice to be back at this meeting versus January, February, for the last couple of years, so that's good for us. Overall, I think you'll find good results here from the audit as well. So with this handout, it starts out with just the top here, some of the dollar reports we issued. First one on there is the audit opinion. That's in the booklet itself. There's a report in there from us that tells you anything you need to know from if there's any issues, if we're not, you receive an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level you can receive from a report. You do, there's, at the very end of the report, there's a reporting of the federal government and the states, or it's called Schedule Five. If there's anything of that nature to report, it's included back there. You have one item, it's very, very common. It's ongoing for the district here. It's called limited segregation duties. I've talked about this each year real briefly. Not going to hire a bunch of people to solve this problem. So you have very competent people that do the work. They do it well. We test that. We didn't find any problems associated with that, error or fraud or any nature. But you're not going to hire more people to completely segregate all the activities, the receipts, the spurs, journal entries, all those type of things. You have controls in place to the best you can. You rely on those. We test those. And that suits your needs as far as answering to the state or whatever, as far as what you're going to do about the item that we're reporting in the financial statements here. So you have to have a corrective action plan for anything that ends up there. And yours is to continue monitoring as you do and rely on your controls and evaluate as changes occur, changes personnel occur, items that you adopt as a board for policy. But all in all, not a big red flag. It's very, very common. The only other item, section number one there, just highlights a filing of the state. So in addition to the booklet, that's due after everything comes together, there is a reporting to DPI in September that the district does verify that date, and that happens as well. I just want to point that out here, too, because technically it falls under what's called a compilation, a separate activity, but no problems associated with that. Okay, now we'll talk about the numbers here a little bit. Item number two talks about your general fund, and I know you consider your general fund Fund Ten. But all required reporting has to combine that with 27. 27 is zero is out every year, so if reporting standards save, if there's a situation like that, just like every district in the state, you go together and call it the general fund. So keep that in mind when you look at these numbers here. Maybe, because when I look at your general fund, I look at a few different things. And for financial strength anyway, and it points you to those highlighted, those highlighted rules, those like on your capex is highlighted as well. First one there, unassigned fund balance. That's your year-end reserves. You liquidate all of your cash, collect all your receivables, pay all your bills, ask what would be left, and you carry it for the next year. $3.3 million melted. So you see there, there is an increase in that number, so positive results for the year. That's down below there, that $144,000 positive number. That's your net revenue or net profit for the year if you want to look at it in those terms. $144,000, a little better than budget. The second shaded row though, that's your, that's what you spent for the year. Essentially, your expenditure is of $19.4 million. That's up about $1 million from the previous year. So while your reserves did go up, they did a little bit better than budget. Your expenses went up as well. So when we look at your financial health, we're going to take a look at those two things, those two numbers, the $3.3 million and the $19.4. That is your ratio at the bottom, so it's 17.0%. And because of the increasing expenditures, that's why that number actually went down a little bit. You had a financially good year, right? Everything was positive there, but just because of the math there, that went down a little bit. The good news is you do have a policy of kind of maintaining this number between 17 and 19%. I mentioned this last few years, too, while that's a very narrow window. You guys have hit it here in your trend. And because of that, you're making your own policy. You take a look at some of those kind of pitfalls. If you drop kind of below our rule of thumb, which is closer to 25%, or the average of where the districts we serve, which is maybe even closer to 28%. Look for, now are you relying on short-term borrowing? You're incurring a lot of interest costs and stuff like that. While you do have some short-term borrowing, your interest cost is very low. It's only $200. So that's kind of the main one there. Other pitfalls to be found, breaking or stuff like that. Yours is fine. So you're able to operate at this level maybe as compared to a lot of the neighboring districts, or try to be a little bit higher, but not out of ballpark. Operate a little bit lean in our opinion, but paid a little, so that's standpoint here in good shape. On page two, talks about the remaining funds here, and now it's just your year-end reserves, needs to be funds. A little bit of a mix here in the special revenue fund, troubled morath poems. Now, we all know the trend here, nothing alarming, and in a good shape. Your service fund continues to hold some reserves, over $628,000. All your principal and interest requirements for next during the year 2019. That's what that fund is there to do. You've got some resources in there to fund future principal and interest payments. So at some point, you can use that in your budget for paying some debt service. Capital projects fund, you do have two of those. The first one, the big one, you can see that's blown down as you issued debt a number of years back. You use those resources to incur expenses for the projects, and now there's $80 that remain in that fund that needs to be here. So at some point, I can tell you that was greater than zero. The other smaller fund there, you can see it is pretty minimal, $50 was initially set up there. You might remember this. It's on 46. It established that a number of years back. That gets the clock, that sets the clock for you. It has some options going forward, but it has to sit there for a number of years anyway. So you did your homework back during the initial year. You set it up. You put a few dollars in there, like a lot of districts did. And now you can, you're getting to that point where you can probably do some, start funding it and using those dollars for capital type items. And lastly, a little summary of your long-term obligations out there. There was no new debt that was issued during this audit period for 2019, so that reduction is your principal payments that were made during the year. It brings the balance down from last year. Those items I talked about as far as timing information from the state that we roll into your audit in numbers, that's kind of summarized here on the bottom, that WRS pension and the supplemental, well, the other post-employment benefits and pension benefits, those are items you rely on either the state or your actuary to provide. And the only item I'll point out here is your WRS pension. It's there as a negative number there in 2018. I remember this from last year, but that is a measurement of the whole fund. So you were a participant. You have a very, very small portion of that entire plan. That small portion is what's very on books. And in 20, at the end of 2018, the plan was overfunded. It was at 104% funded. So everybody put an asset on their books. Well, it turned the other way. The actuaries came up with a different number. This will swing back and forth presumably, depending on the year and the experience the plan has each year. So again, it's a liability this year. That's why you bring $2.1 million liability on your books. Doesn't mean you have to check for $2.1 million. That's, you continue to pay the pension benefit with your payroll as you go. You'll budget for it as it comes to you. Only time this might be an issue is if this number gets really big and the plan has to do something. It's going to go back to all participants and say, we need to fund it for this. It's probably a lot, but they won't likely have you incur an actual liability. Go to bank, borrow some money, pay for it. So hopefully that all makes sense. The very last item on this page is just a measurement against statutory limit of how much tax-supported debt you can hold. And that's that general obligation debt up above, and you're at 47% of that limit. And see, that's decreased over time as you pay down some principal, and you've had an increase in equalized value within the community. So hopefully, those things are working to your benefit and reducing that percentage. So again, all in all, pretty quick here, no red flags that I'm seeing from an audit standpoint that results for the year.
Questions on the audit? It looks like a good report. Hopefully, I got all of Sarah's questions answered, and then we talk to her. It looks like a good report, hopefully I got all of Sarah's questions answered, and then we talk to her. Another good job by our finance department, so appreciate the hard work. Another good year for all, so. Thank you, Brock.
My pleasure, thank you. Any questions, if you have any after this, just throw them through finance and I'll try and answer them.
Thank you. Okay, that the next item on our agenda is our depression screener data, my high school principal Tracy Klein. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Does this just link up, or?
Yeah, I'll do it.
I'm learning, good. Also, thank you for having us, I brought Travis, Patty, and our other counselor here, as well as Monica Nechmera from Family Therapy Associates, so she has been working with high school students and middle school students, and elementary too, and all three buildings here with individual counseling. It was clear to me when I joined this district four years ago, the district's commitment to student mental health, so in turn, I thought it was fair to share some information that I've collected over the years. So, the depression screener, I know, is not new from when I started, I know it started a few years prior to that, but this school year, we had a few mental health situations to start the year, and then just a general uneasiness in myself about our students. And so, in the past, we've done this depression screener like a bit later, like January or February timeframe, so this year, we, we did it sooner, we did it in early November. The depression screener that we use is quite simple, at the high school, it is eight yes or no questions, it doesn't take any longer than about five minutes for students to complete, and we notify parents and guardians about a week ahead of time, so that they can choose to opt their student out, if that's what they would like to do. Students who scored at a certain level will meet with one of us, and this year, Monica joined us to help as well, to meet with those students. So, I just have the list of the eight questions up there, but just to kind of simplify that a bit, the first question is asking students if they're currently being treated for depression. There's five questions related to symptomology, I guess you could say, and then two specific questions related to suicide. I'll go back here, so we say if a student scores at a concerning level, that can be two different things, so the kind of priority moment for us is a student that says yes to the question of seriously thinking about killing themselves in the past four weeks. That is the initial prompt for us to meet with those students. Following that, what would be considered a concerning level or at risk for depression would be somebody that answers four or more of these questions with yes. So, I've been keeping track on some spreadsheets, with pen and pencil here, just old chicken scratch, but four years of data, so back when I started in sixteen, seventeen, we had about twelve point three percent of our students that took the screener as being at risk for depression. The numbers that you'll see, those points there, are individual students, so this year, it was seventy-four that scored at risk for depression, which has gone up to twenty point four percent of the students that took the screener. You'll see those checkpoints there for the years and the percentages, in the parentheses, that's the amount of students that took the screener, although ideally, we'd like to have all of our students take the screener, due to unique schedules and such, we've tried to tweak when, at what point in the day to do the screener, that's kind of adjusted those numbers there. But needless to say, you can see that the amount of students and the percentage of students that have taken screener, that percentage has gone up for at risk of depression. To break it down a bit further, that black line there, are those students that answered yes to having thoughts of suicide in the last four weeks. So, this year, we had eighteen students that said yes to that question. The, so all of those eighteen students, the three of us met with on that first day, and then notified parents of what we discovered. Eleven of those students are not currently receiving treatment for depression, so that can either be through one-on-one counseling or medication. So, that is concerning, that we don't have those students getting any additional support. I did reach out to Chris Jardine at the middle school for some of their information from this year's screener, now, they use a slightly different version than us at the high school, but in essence, the results are somewhat the same, in that you'll see on the first column there, it said, you ever seriously thought about killing yourself? So, the blue line is those that said yes to that, and the red you can see is no, and so they have three questions related to suicide, so those three are listed there. Now, this is for the seventh grade class, I believe, maybe you can speak to this, that eighth graders have typically done the screener, and this year?
We would all win on sixth grade this year.
Sixth grade as well?
Yep.
So, you only have seventh and eighth grade here, however, and that eighth grade is somewhat similar to what seventh grade had indicated. So, to follow up on kind of what we are doing, when we look at mental health counseling services, in terms of referrals, or students that are receiving individual therapy in our buildings, so again, we've partnered with Family Therapy Associates, we do have another counselor that comes into the high school from another agency, and he's with a couple of students. But you'll see the middle school and high school there, the middle school had six students that were receiving services with school-based counseling, with Family Therapy Associates, six returned from last year, and it looks like they have, the counselors there have submitted eight new referrals this school year. So, that is completed referrals, so basically, the recommendation from the counselor for individual counseling, parents completing paperwork, and authorizations with insurance and whatnot, and then us getting those back to Family Therapy Associates. So, there are eight new referrals submitted, and three so far have been able to start of those eight. And at the high school, we also had eight new referrals this year, and two have started, one in school and, and one at the clinic to start, until we can start that in the school as well. Okay, are there any questions about this, or want me to go back to any of the data?
Of the students who were referred and didn't start, do we have a, do we know, is it very individual reasons why, or is it budget or staffing?
Um, it's, it's time, so I know the counselors that come to us, they, you know, they have clients that they see at the clinic as well, and making that work, balancing your schedules here, Monica, can you be able to?
Our wait time for schools is January, February, in office, it's out to like March, so it's just a shortage of providers right now, for the, and I call.
Shortage of provider, okay, in general, not just specific to us?
This actual counseling or actual treatment?
Treatment. We do some psychoeducation groups at the elementary and middle school also.
Okay. Next question I have is, it looks like we're getting an increase in the numbers that are identified, is it, are there an increase of issues, or just better identification of the issues that are present?
I mean, it's hard to answer that, I would say probably both, you know, there are, our students are better educated on what to see in each other, and so they have come to us much more often when they have concerns about their peers, so, so that has been part of it. Also, I, doing the screener earlier this year, I thought was a more proactive approach than waiting until January, February for that identification purpose, and so that we can form those relationships with any of those students that may have been a surprise to us this year.
Is there any evidence, or anecdotal evidence, that the stigma is being reduced, so kids are more willing to be honest?
Again, it's hard to answer, I think with, with the screener, I think it would be for some students still easy to kind of hide behind that there's nothing going on, because they are just simply yes, no questions, you know, we can't necessarily meet with every student and seed. I do think that amongst them, amongst the kids, it's definitely that stigma is, is reduced, and that they feel more comfortable coming forward and saying, there's something not right.
Tracy, you mentioned, just even from the start of the year, you had a different sense, you know, not individuals, but can you share what that sense was, and then as you were getting the feedback from the screener and maybe some of the following conversations? Did those align, or what, what is it that you're seeing, hearing, sensing that, that would help us understand?
Sure, well, I, I feel like there's been, any, this is just my, could just be my perception, but I feel like we've had more students coming in concerned about their peers than maybe I've experienced before. We have had some pretty serious, significant mental health crises type situations that have, you know, taken a lot of time to work through those situations with those students, with their families, you know, getting Kurt and Jason involved and, and that sort of thing as well. It was just, it was a quick start to the year, I felt like, compared to previous years.
So, probably a good, probably a good thing that peers are sharing their concerns about others, because that's a direct reflection on some of the, the hard work that has been done in the schools around advocating for each other. It just, those observations, they, I, I see it, and I just came off of a retreat experience, and forty percent of the kids on it were talking about lots of really complex stuff in their lives that lead to this.
And I don't know, I mean, our eyes have been more open to, to trauma and things like that too, you know, not just in the counseling office, but almost the whole building, and so there's more conversations surrounding that as well, and just observations of changes in kids' behavior and things like that too, that may be contributing to my gut feeling earlier this year, I, I don't know.
We have great participation from teachers, there are a lot of emails we get just saying, they're different today, can you just talk to them, and that, that leads us on so many different avenues as well, it's telling for everyone.
So, when you sit down here in a minute, we're gonna go over the treasures report, and we have a bet of funds specifically for suicide prevention, and we've probably, we've used it, we do things, but there's probably some opportunity there that needs to be cultivated by, by you guys to be able to make that meaningful, so you guys can probably speak to what's next on, on that line, but.
Yeah, I, I think.
But there's seventeen thousand dollars sitting there, that could help go that way.
And I, I agree that the, having that fund there is very helpful, but I think what we're seeing in a national trend is, you see twenty percent of our kids, we need to be looking at a full-time mental health counselor, certainly at the high school, I can't speak to the other buildings, but. We look a lot at school safety, and put in great features at all the schools, but it's truly, the mental health, yeah, it's reactive, it's, it doesn't hit us where the, where the kids need it, and that's the, the mental health. And we should be, we should take that, a proactive approach to that as well, as, as much as, as the man traps and buzzing in and that stuff makes a difference from a safety standpoint. My biggest concern and our gut ache, I remember a specific week when we just said, we felt like it was, something was gonna happen, thankfully it didn't, is that we don't, we don't know if we can get to the kids that need it. Tracy just kind of glossed over the amount of time that you get one student in crisis, and it's, it's, that's it, that's where you're focused, that's the way it should be, but I'm concerned about what kids we aren't able to reach. I'm not, I'm not a professional counselor, I can talk to a kid, but we need people that, that are trained to work with these kids and their mental health concerns, so it's not, I don't think it's going away, the, the money in the red shovel fund is awesome, and we bring in people, and we have programs and stuff, but I think if we wanna get to the right cause, we've gotta have people in place that can work for these kids on a mental health side, right from the beginning.
Well, that was, that was my question, this, you know, what is a school, can we provide, I guess one of the concerns I have is the same that goes on with all the other districts, is we can identify those students that are in crisis and need help, but sometimes it's taking two, three, four months to get them into the, the treatment that they absolutely need, and, you know, it's, it's troubling that there aren't enough resources out there. You know, when they're in crisis, they need help now, and not three months from now.
And I think, and I think to, to speak to that, it's, if we, we can get people in the building that are trained to do it, and we don't have to schedule out, where they're, they're there, they're there, just like the teachers are there, that's what will make a difference.
But like you say, if you're saying that some of this is three months out, four months out in your office, and having someone there would be great, and scheduling things, but you're gonna have crisis come up and that sort of thing, but, so you guys can't prob, you aren't able to add enough staff to meet the demand in, in your office?
There's just a shortage of providers, I think, though, in a crisis situation, if someone was at the school, it's the same as if it's in the office, if a crisis comes up, we can cancel or reschedule clients.
No, I, I realize that, I'm not, that's not really the question I'm asking, but is, is it, it is a general shortage of qualified providers?
It is, just in this area in general, there's not enough people for the need.
Here's a question that I would have also, is, you know, we're dealing with insurance companies and stuff to help pay for some of this, how much time of the providers are spent just shuffling paperwork versus doing the treatment, and?
Depends on the insurance, in an ideal world, if a school provider was at the school, he wouldn't have to run through insurance, because some insurance systems don't cover schools' place of service, which is really frustrating. Doesn't matter if I'm in the school or in the office, the work we're doing is still the work we're doing, so in an ideal world, you would have to run through insurance, unfortunately, this isn't the ideal world, so there would be some puzzle pieces that we have to figure out.
Now, the ideal world is, one of, one of the districts that I, I know of is Chit Tech Warehouse, they hired a.
They don't run through insurance, and it's awesome, because you can meet with anyone for however long you want, as many times as you want, depending on the insurance, there can be constraints of how often you meet, where you meet, and other things. That Chit Tech does not some job of, they don't run through insurance, so if something comes up, even if the kid isn't having insurance, or their place of services are covered, they can still meet, and they can meet as many times a day as needed, and, I mean, in an ideal world, that would be everywhere.
But she's, she's phenomenal, she is, she is an answer to this, the red shovels, the red shovel's great, but we can only cover it up with so many speakers and curriculums and whatever, like, you need to, she needs to be hired in this, like, somebody like her, or her, I like her. She needs to be hired in this district to help us tackle this.
Back to the conversations that we've been having about programming and staffing needs and that sort of thing, you know, this, this has to be.
We've been teaming this stuff for months, and then, sometimes it doesn't even, I, I can't do my job, because I'm doing mental health counseling more often than I'm doing what's supposed to be.
That is your job too, probably more than anything else, but, I, I understand what you're saying.
Just as an example, so we, it was a home game, and I was there, and Jason was there, and Jason got called, and he was with a girl for two and a half hours, your mom, so it doesn't mean that it's gonna, that, that's, that's great work, we, we love to stand in the gap for kids, all of us do. But we're not, we're not trained for that, fortunately, he had a great relationship with the child and the parent and all that, and it's getting, the help is there, but I think as we go forward, we need to really think about, at all our levels, how we can help stand in the gap for those kids that have mental health issues, that you can't learn if you have a mental health issue, you, you're gonna be self-destructive and so on and so forth, so. It's just something to really consider as we move forward, and I appreciate the positive feelings or comments that are coming back about, yeah, we need to, we need to consider these things. I appreciate the positive feelings or comments that are coming back about, yeah, we need to, we need to consider these things.
And I think too, you know, we work so closely at the elementary school with Monica as well and then one of her colleagues that come into the school. And I just think that early detection, because trying to help them, right, when they're young and they're building those foundations, to leading to the middle school and high school is so preventative, not outright, but by the time they get there, there's, you know, fifteen, sixteen years of problems, right, or, you know, lagging skills.
Versus fifteen or sixteen years of tools and understanding and awareness.
Yes, and so, right, so when they're five and they are seeing kids at five years old that are building and when you can start there, right, I mean, it's not going to save and cover everything for them, but gives them so many tools for their life skills.
If we can catch little kids early and help educate parents on how to handle some of these things, it can really prevent a problem before it becomes a problem.
And that's what's been ve, uh, huge vice is that, you know, we have a, when it comes from Monica or her colleague to a parent about, you know, trying to help support them and how can we do this or that from a mental health standpoint, it's, it's just, it's different than coming from. Right, because we have a different kind of relationship from an administrative point of view, it's just a, but so then we can kind of take team on that and it's just, it's very helpful to have them in our building. So I think we're in the right direction, a step in the right direction, we didn't have that even before. So continue to building, to build on that, it's just huge.
Well, I think it's important for the, the school and the community to deal with this upfront because we have been rocked to the core before and we're hoping it never happens again, but it's always a possibility.
Monica, what's your certification title?
So right now, I'm a licensed professional counselor in training, so the state of Wisconsin makes me work two whole years under supervision before I can be independently licensed. So I'm about ten months into that first year. I have, at the direct hours met, so as, in the state of Wisconsin, you have to meet with, so what we call direct hours, so face-to-face hours with a client for a thousand hours. I have that. It's not the indirect, so you just have to work two years basically. So I got my masters at Stowe in clinical mental health counseling and my bachelor's is from River Falls in elementary education.
So are there any constraints or differences in working with a school with license journey that are on our part or your, you know, your part?
There's, I don't know if it's constraints, it's probably more, we would have to structure a system if you guys are going to do it. Paperwork, how, how are we going to file things, policies, if a kid is god-somebody days, you're absent from school, how do you want to do that? And that's true in any clinic, we have policies, we have procedures, it's just how you guys would want to do it, how you guys want to set that up. It's not clearly constraints, just figuring out the trends.
So one of the things that I've also seen is like the shared service model where the school district partners specifically, which is some of what we're doing now. It's can you partner to enough level of resource in school counseling, those types of things? So, you know, do we want to become our own, do we want to create our own counseling center within Central or do we want to have a counseling center come into Central, right? So we were looking at, there were other districts that actually had partnered with a provider. That provider basically set up an office within that school. It's, we were around that somewhere when we presented up in Green Bay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Does that present the insurance barrier a little, John?
I, I don't know enough about it.
That seems like it would be.
You would have to look at it because there was, there were things about referral and what can be shared back to the school and there's, there's all sorts of important privacy regulations around counseling and all that too.
Having it within the district would probably alleviate the problem of uninsured students you try, trying to access the service. That would be the biggest benefit that I could see.
And you also run into the old stigma piece where we do have the red shovel fund, but then there's families who, there might be pride involved or things like that where it's a give and take type of thing where they're, they're not willing to take that money to then help, it's, yeah, it's a big piece. So the therapy, right, versus counseling, they'd be very, they'd be different things, right?
I, 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 I think that, you know, as we define what's important in program and if mental wellness is an important program that we think is important to be an excellent district, then you go and you look at the warehouses, Chitacs, you go out and ask, what are other people doing? You look at what is the models that seem to make sense and what are the costs associated around those types of programming? And then you bring it as a recommendation into, you know, the bigger conversation. But I, I, I think that we would have to look outside our district to find some experience, expertise, whatever that would be.
Right, both sides, the, the provider side and the school district side to see who's doing what, what works, how it's funded.
What's the cost advantages?
Are there other questions for Tracy, Travis, Monica? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for the information, appreciate the hard work.
Well, you know, yeah, just wrapping this up, however many years ago, ten years ago, we, we.